Those who are on Webex, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I did not hear you.
Thank you.
Did you hear Lisa?
Councilwoman Clancy, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Now we can. Thank you. Can't see you though.
I have my videos on now.
All right. Thank you. You ready Diane? You ready? When it's 6:30, will be ready. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I am calling the St. Louis County Council Meeting to Order, Tuesday, August 3, 2021. The hour is 6:30 PM. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please? Councilmember Days. Please call the roll. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you very much. The order of voting this evening will be as follows. Fitch, Clancy, Dunaway, Tracus, Harder, Days, and Webb. The Journal of the Meeting of July 27, 2021, has not yet been finalized. At this particular point, though, let me just say that I think upon entering the chamber, all of you received some decorum rules and regulations. I am really hopeful that you will abide by those so that we can have an orderly meeting. We're doing ver- excuse me, we're doing very well. But I want to make sure that everybody during public comment is heard and able to be heard and that you can understand what they're saying. So with that, I am of the opinion that we probably have a few speakers this evening. And I want to extend the public comment hour to two this evening. Is there any objection from the council?
No.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. We will extend the public portion of our meeting to two hours. With that, the Journal of the Meeting of July 27 has not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications. Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number two, Sixth District. You're on mute, Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize. Receiving file, please.
So ordered. Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive file and hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Item number four, Seventh District.
Receiving file.
So ordered. Moving to other communications. Item number one. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number two. Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number three. Receive file and the issuing of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no motion carries. Item number four, Fifth and Sixth Districts.
Receiving files.
So ordered. Item number five. Receive file and the appropriation transfers be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carries. Item number six, Fourth District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number seven, Fifth District.
Receive file and the county counselor, please prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number eight. Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion will apply through item number 11, and that will be the order. Item number 12, Third District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number 13, Sixth District.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number 14. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number 15. Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order. Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, Fourth District.
Receive, receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number two, Seventh District.
Receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. We are now to the public forum, a section of our agenda. As I said earlier, we are going to extend this for an additional hour. We want as many of you to have the opportunity to say what you need and want to say before us. This is a public body, and we do recognize that. How many speakers do we have, Mr. Clerk?
Madam Chair, we have 47 speakers this evening.
Forty-seven speakers. Each person will have three minutes. Three minutes only. We really have to stay to that three-minute timeframe so that everybody will try, we'll try to get as many people as we can in during that particular time. When you come forward, please give your name and zip code for the record. And with that, Mr. Clerk, our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is William Hermanson, followed by Justine Case.
My name is William Hermanson, 63011. I am addressing the mRNA gene therapy bioweapon mistakenly called a vaccine. I have provided to each of you the sources of the minimal information I am presenting. Many of the citizens in this room know this information. The Nuremberg Codex and the Related Declaration of Helsinki form the basis for the Code of Federal Regulations, Title 45 Regulations issued by the United States for the ethical treatment of human subjects in medical experimentation. The Codex states that the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential, and the experiment should be so conducted as to avoid all unnecessary physical and mental suffering and injury. CFR Title 21 states that Americans in a clinical study must give their written consent to any medical treatment such as vaccination, and informed consent requires candidates to be given the right to refuse vaccination, the right to confidentiality, and the right to know if there are any alternatives. Part of the definition of murder is behaving in a way that shows extreme reckless disregard for life and results in the victim's death. Any coercion or pressure tactics used on employees to be vaccinated contravenes the Nuremberg Code, the Helsinki Declaration, and the U.S. Crimes Against Humanity Act. Irrespective if any harm should come from forced vaccinations for you merely intending and conspiring to inject employees with experimental substances without any regard for their safety or informed consent, you could be named as a co-defendant in crimes against humanity in international tribunals. The treatments being marketed as COVID-19 vaccines are still in Phase III clinical trials and hence qualify as medical experiments. Numerous doctors, scientists, and medical experts are issuing dire warnings about the short and long-term effects of the injection bioweapon. The number of deaths by these injections have exceeded 45,000 in the U.S. alone. The overall survival rate for COVID-19 is 99.9%, the equivalent of a common cold. The CDC admitted 99% of deaths from COVID had pre-existing conditions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justine Case, followed by Katie Geary.
Hi, my name is Justine Case, 63123, and I thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I just wanted to take a couple moments of my time to ask any military veteran or active duty to please rise and remain standing. For tho- for those that do not understand, please remain standing, folks. For those that do not understand, these folks have sworn, just like I did in '89, raised my right hand, wrote on a piece of paper, signed on the dotted line to give my life, if necessary, to uphold not to protect the people of the United States, not to protect the flag of the United States. We gave and we raised our hand to protect the Constitution of the United States from all enemies, both foreign and domestic. So if you decide to be a enemy of, a domestic enemy of the Constitution, no man, woman, or child has ever absconded us from our oath. So I would ask and implore you to, if you took the same oath as servants, we are citizens, we are not subjects. We are citizens of this United States. And I ask and I implore you to always make sure that you understand that and that if you become an enemy of the Constitution, we will protect the Constitution from you. I do want to thank my fellow soldiers and all of the military for their service. And I thank you for your time, but please do not become an enemy of the Constitution. The injections and the masks are against the Constitution. This is a legal binding document that you had sworn to obey. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Geary, followed by Rob Geary.
Thank you for listening this evening. I've got a lot to say, so I'm going to speak fast. I would like to thank Chairwoman Days for your unwavering attention to the people as we share our views. Your continued eye contact and attention lets me know that you're listening. And listening to your constituents is vital if you're going to do the will of the people. Last week, you handled yourself as chairwoman with grace. Thank you for that. Regarding the proposals for another mask mandate for all the people of St. Louis County and a vaccination requirement for county workers and contractors, I would ask that the council would vote no. Mandating a vaccine is a very slippery slope and it's unconstitutional due to its outstanding survivability rate of the population. In St. Louis County, the survivability rate is 97.87%, according to STL Corona. Let me say that again. Nearly 100% of the people that get COVID in St. Louis County survive. Why would we mandate a cover for our faces? Why would we mandate a not FDA-approved vaccine? People can do these things if they want to, but please do not mandate them. Lest you think I do not care about the 2,320 people who died in St. Louis County, let me assure you that I do. My grandfather was lost to COVID in May. I was unable to hold his hand as he died because of COVID restrictions, despite the fact that I have natural immunity because I've already had COVID. I did not get to say goodbye to Vito D'Angelo, who lived 90 beautiful years because of COVID restrictions. But guess what? My grandpa went out living his life until the very end. He still went to the casino. He still saw family because death comes for us all. He was going to go out grand and glorious, as he would say. I plead with the council to uphold the Constitution and vote that we citizens have the right to make our own health decisions. We can drink ourselves to death with alcohol if we want to. We can give ourselves heart disease with fast food, or we can choose to abstain from alcohol. We could choose to not eat fast foods. The point is, is that we as American citizens have the right to choose. I would also like to ask the council to shift away from saying vaccinated or unvaccinated and towards immune or not immune. Europe is actually leading the way here by following science and recognizing natural immunity is just as valid as vaccinated immunity, if not better, particularly when it comes to the variants. To not acknowledge immunity makes it sound as if you don't actually care about the health and wellness of the people, but only about how many people you can get vaccinated. Finally, I would like to directly address Madam Dun- Dunaway. Ma'am, you are a county leader, and you set the tone for the rest of us. I would highly encourage you to lead by example and speak to us the way you wish to be spoken to. Your admonishment on Tuesday was embarrassing for a leader. You spoke to us with disdain, sarcasm, and you made assumptions about us and stated that that night as fact. The way you chose to address us makes it difficult for me to listen to any legitimate argument that you may have to present. Instead, I'm focused on your behavior. I don't say this to cause you further embarrassment, but to truly encourage you. If you are to represent your constituency, please do so above reproach. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rob Geary, followed by Xena Hackworth.
Good evening. My biggest concern with the mask mandate is where does it end? If you look at the facts, there was a mask mandate last year and social distancing, and it didn't stop or slow down the spread of COVID. What did it do, though, is increase suicide rates. It also hurt many families by closing their businesses or putting them out of work. So now some of the council want to implement a new mask mandate, which was voted down last week and overturned by a judge today, and a mandate on getting the vaccine if you want me to work at a county building for a vaccine that is not FDA-approved. Just let that sink in. The Food and Drug Administration has not approved these mandates, this vaccine. So I ask again, where does it end? And all I can say is I hope it ends with your vote on, your vote no on this man- mask mandate and any other regarding COVID. Thank you.
Next speaker is Xena Hackworth, followed by Tom Sullivan.
It is an honor to be able to stand before a woman, a chairwoman who has actually brought honor and respect back to the chair seat. So thank you so much. The last time I stood here, there was none. So thank you so much for bringing, for bringing respect back and professionalism back to this, back to this chamber as a chairwoman. You did a wonderful, excellent job last week, and I am so honored to call you chairwoman because you have actually earned that title. So thank you so much. I also want to thank everyone who voted against tyranny and the mask mandate last week. Thank you so much because as a constitutional conservative, I know that I have a right not to or to wear a mask if I want to, and so do you all. So thank you for respecting our rights. I also want to say to Councilwoman Webb, thank you for calling out the con man last week for using black folks in North County for whatever political, whatever it is he wanted to do. And those people in this audience last week who cheered you on for saying that, they were absolutely sincere because people like Paul Berry, who is black, me, and other black conservatives, they hear it all the time, that what you said is voiced to us on a regular basis, and we don't know what to do. Now, if you want those really white Republicans who live in all of those districts to come and help, nobody ever asked them before. So please do not think that we are, we as Republicans or those as white Republicans, you know, have anything against North County because I'll drive 30 miles to go shopping there on a regular basis anyway. We don't have anything against North County. The white people who are Republicans and conservatives have nothing against North County. Just ask, you know, but nobody has ever asked. We have Paul Berry, you can ask for help, and they will get the word out to us. Renee Artman, raise your hand. And she will, you know, also get the word out to us as well, or any one of the three Republican countymen here. They will get the word to us if you need our help. So that's what I want you to know. We are not like the certain racist Democrats that are on the council. And so, but the other thing I also want to say real quick, hold on, hold on. What I want to say real quick, when, anytime, as far as racism in this building, every time this black woman walks into this room or walks into the building, every white police officer that I have encountered or even black police officer or anyone else, every last one of them have treated me in a really racial manner. They've treated me the exact same way they treat the white folks who come in here. So for you, for anyone to say that they were racist in any way or act, and as many times as I have been in this building, I have never, ever been treated badly, and they, I've always been treated with respect and everything. So I'm assuming that everyone else is too. So to Sam Page, if you want, you know, if you people think that there's racism, tell your, first of all, let the, let the police know that they're coming. And the last thing I want to say, tell them to get here on time.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Ashley Betke.
Madam Chair, members of the council, a few things to mention. Last week, the Army Corps of Engineers had a listening session having to do with the problems caused by flooding in the River DePere stormwater channel through University City. According to the Army Corps spokesperson, it causes damage of $5.8 million a year. The problems have gone on in New City for a very long time. A recent story in The Post is bash about the problems, told of two residents drowning in 2008 during a bad storm. Raging water overflowed the banks of the River DePere, causing the deaths. Five or six years ago, at a meeting of the University City Library, many residents showed up to demand MSD do something about erosion problems around the River DePere. Said MSD officials, "We won't do anything. It's your problem." The University City Mayor, city manager, and some council members once went to an MSD meeting telling sewer district officials something needs to be done about River DePere's problems. The date of the meeting, June 21, 1966. Yet we are continually told that addressing problems on a regional basis is the best way. It hasn't happened with MSD. A big appropriation for ByState is again on the agenda. Just last week, Elia Davis did a story about someone unable to get to work because his bus didn't show up. It turns out ByState is running 150 drivers short, where council members are aware of the shortage and the problems it caused. Before you approve $160 million for ByState, I would suggest you get a little more information about what's going on at the transit agency. As I have said for years, you need to hire someone to monitor the agency. There's a lot of money going to ByState, and you don't know how it is all being spent. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Next speaker is Ashley Betke, followed by Renee Artman.
Hi, I'm Ashley Betke, and I reside in 63128. And typed this up, I was going to say this last week, but obviously we didn't have any time. So, Dr. Page, it really is a shame that you're not here, so we can all say this directly to your face, first off. I'm a trainer, and I can think of five things on the top of my head that can protect citizens and help boost their immune system. That's exercise, a well-rounded diet, water intake, good night's sleep, and proper supplementation, just like vitamin C and D that a lot of doctors across this entire country have advocated for. Now, obviously, doing these five things is everybody's choice, and I live in that type of world on a daily basis, and my immune system has never had any issues. And even if I do get sick, I do what everybody else does. I make sure that I take proper rest. I make sure that I'm drinking enough fluids, and I make sure that I stay away from friends and family because the last thing I would want to do is make them sick. So since, so since when is it the government's job to tell me how I can live my life? None of them are my parents. They didn't raise me to become the person that I am today. And all you have, and at the end of all this, you have all these businesses so sick and tired of everything that Sam Page has done. He has been literally banned from multiple different types of companies across the entire St. Louis City region. One of them is Harpoz. It's great. I know common sense is hard to come by these days, but in case you didn't know, you can't test for the Delta variant. We already know that. The CDC recalled the PCR test last week for COVID-19, claiming that they were faulty and showing more false positives. So then, that begs the question, how do you know what variant it is? Because if you know for sure it's a Delta or a COVID variant, I would love to see the documentation that states that it's different. So in two weeks, there's going to be another deadly variant that's going to kill all of us? Because if this virus was so deadly, do you really think it would need 24/7 news broadcasting, hours worth of propaganda blasting on the television, and companies forcing their employees to get vaccinated? We reward the vaccinated with unhealthy foods like burgers, fries, and beers from all of these giant food chain companies, but then all the unvaccinated don't get to participate in everything that we've been doing for the last, how many years we've been on this earth? So then that further suppresses your immune system, inhaling in all those unhealthy foods. So when did your immune system suddenly become a conspiracy theory? Since when did we surpass people's right to choose to get a vaccination or not? And when, when did we go from that to 100 miles an hour to a forced vaccination? We know where they're being given out, and if we wanted to get it, we would gladly get it. But until we see serious long-term effects, there's no reason we should be forced to take an experimental vaccine or be fired from our jobs because I've seen that happen. That's what it has come down to. We may live in a free country, but every day it seems like we're losing sight of what that is with everything that has happened in the past year. I even got COVID on my birthday last year. I did the two-week quarantine. I made sure I drank all my fluids. I made sure I rested. And so if I have the antibodies, and why do I need to be forced to get a vaccine? Then I know it isn't going to help me or my family. I also, when I had COVID, I lived with my mom, and she had stage 3 ovarian cancer, so her immune system was already crap anyways, and she didn't even get it. So today, I'm calling on Sam Page to be recalled. Everything he has done in this past year and a half has done nothing to benefit. He has done nothing to benefit the St. Louis County citizens and has only benefited him and will not stop with the tyranny. We will never comply with any more mandates, and he has up his sleeves from here on out. Sam Page, we don't work for you. You work for us, and you're fired.
Our next speaker is Renee Artman, followed by Jason Moore.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am still a little bit annoyed about last Tuesday. When people, citizens come, and we have large groups, yeah, we're going to get a little rowdy. But none of these people gave the finger. None of them pushed anyone. None of them shoved anyone. None of them talked of racial slurs. And this morning, in the paper, Dr. Khan, and I don't even know if he's a doctor, put, put in that there were Republican operatives. It's not a secret I'm a Republican. It's not a secret. But you know what? You and I have a dialogue. We can talk to each other. Can't talk to them. They don't listen. All they do is belittle us. I want to thank the police officers. These guys are always... Not just guys, these men and women put their life on the line. I, I can't, and I can't stand when anybody belittles them. And what you tried to do last night, Mrs. Clancy, was annoying. And that, but I'm sure you're going to continue to annoy us, so... I am totally against a mask mandate. We are adults. It is to mask or not to mask, and it is our choice. It is to get the vaccine or not to get the vaccine, and it is our choice. If we are going to put people that have to get a vaccine, and if they're not going to be able to work, it's just like shutting us down. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by Tom Kikum.
Jason Moore, 63021. I want to thank everybody for letting us speak tonight. I watched- I watched last week's hearing, or meeting, show from Florida on vacation, because I couldn't Chairwoman Day, Days, you did wonderful in managing, so thank you for that. Police officers were wonderful as well for managing everything. It just shouldn't have to, I thought it looked just fine on, on camera. I thought Dr. Khan was exposed for what he is, and I don't think he's doing a good job whatsoever. And I think Mr. Trakus, you did a wonderful job exposing him, and I'll give you credit for that. And the media exposure that he's given to the St. Louis County residents, especially all the folks, a lot of folks that I know here, that I've gotten to know over the last year and a half, was abominable. And I would like to know, is he still employed tonight? Has he, has he offered his resignation? Dr. Page, are you going to accept his resignation? Are, are you going to give him his pink slip to the media? I see a whole line of them. When are we going to get a retraction or a challenge of him? Maybe you already have? Maybe you already have, but I don't know, because I don't watch you anymore. So, I just have a couple more things, is, it is not the right, the, the role of government to overprotect us. We, we don't, we know what we're doing with our bodies. If we want to get the vaccine shot, we'll get the vaccine shot. If we want to wear a mask, we'll wear a mask, just like a business can make that decision, or our neighbors can make that decision. It is not our role, or your role, to ever tell somebody what to do. That is, that is a dreadful over, overreach of our government. We have, we have gone way askew of where our originalist, where our founders in writing the U.S. Constitution actually codified for us to live by. I will not comply if that is ever put in place. Send me to jail, I don't care, I will not comply. Dr. Page, I did sign a recall petition tonight, that's now going around. So, we're going to welcome seeing you exit at some point, hopefully before next November, but we will ensure that you are defeated, one way or another. I guess, and in closing, Ms. Dunaway, Mr. Trakus, we did hear what you said last week. I heard it, and I was 1,100 miles away.
Madam Chair.
When are we going to get an apology from you? We deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Kickem, followed by Alexis Lowenthal.
If it's okay, I'd like to read this. I spent a little too much time with some sailors, and I'm going to try and keep the language clean. Members of the council, interested citizens, I am here this evening to address two issues. Dr. Page's unreasonable handling of the COVID epidemic, and Mr. Khan's deplorable conduct. First, Dr. Page has implemented draconian measures in response to the COVID, including shuttering certain businesses while allowing others to flourish. He has also closed schools and senior centers. He has caused severe, and in some case irreparable, damage to the psychological and social welfare of students and seniors. Dr. Page has been asked numerous times to supply supporting evidence to justify these mandates, but he has stubbornly and consistently refused to be responsive to the council and the citizens he serves. Second, Mr. Khan acted in an inexcusably childish manner on Tuesday, July 28th, 21, wherein he stormed out of the council meeting after being rebuked and flipped off the council and the attending citizens, who he supposedly serves. Mr. Khan then claimed to the media that he was verbally and physically threatened and racially slurred. Video evidence and direct testimony from Mr. Khan's attending St. Louis County Police Officer showed Mr. Khan's claims to be false and with no factual basis. Mr. Khan has also claimed for some time the doctor of Dr. Khan. Independent investigation has shown this to be false. I do not know if Dr. Page knew of this false claim, but I believe he should have known. Mr. Khan has shown himself to be a liar and a fraud. Mr. Khan should step down or be removed from office. We citizens of St. Louis County deserve a reliable and properly trained official in the office directing the county's response to health issues, especially in times of a pandemic. On one hand, Dr. Page treats COVID as an excuse to shut down small businesses and restaurants, close schools, shut down athletic competition, oh, except for the activities his son participates And yet, he doesn't seem to consider COVID serious enough to have a competent director running the health department. This situation is inexcusable and unacceptable. We need people responsive to the citizens and respectful of the businesses in the county, as well as the county employees. Mr. Khan unreasonably put that police officer on the spot. I'm very sure Mr. Khan expected that police officer to lie for Mr. Khan. Thankfully, our police officers show integrity when our administrators show none.
Next speaker is Alexis Lowenthal, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Hi, my name is Alexis Lowenthal, and my zip code for the record is 63011. First off, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for you. I'd like to thank everyone behind me for showing up today. And I want to say, Sam Page, we have actually met before. I met you back in February at Flow Valley. You did not seem like you cared at all about this pandemic or the vaccinations, and today, it seems like you don't care. I think we live in the time of one of the biggest psyops experiments we've ever seen. We see closing of businesses, as long as it's not a big corporation like Walmart. We see the media, and I hate to say this, the media doesn't report, report facts anymore, it's propaganda. We see mandatory vaccinations, mandatory masks. I lose my right to choose how I want to live my life, and so does everyone else behind me. I don't need the government telling me how to live my life on a day-to-day basis. I don't need, as someone said, an overreaching parent telling me what's best for me. I'm immunocompromised, I have lupus, but I live my life every day. I work out, I eat well, and you know, my mom, she works in a hospital, she got COVID. I didn't get COVID, and she recovered. So, why is it now that we are forcing people to get a vaccine or else they're excluded from the rest of society? This isn't the America I remember growing up in. We are a country, a county, and a city under God, not under Sam Page, or Khan, or whatever politician that wants to tell me how to live my life. I just hope that you hear us today, and you understand our frustrations. And with that, I just want to thank you for giving my time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Heather Ann Walker Brown.
Suzanne Burley, 63123, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I didn't want to talk about masks tonight. Lisa Clancy is obsessed with talking about masks, so we're here. So, my question tonight is, how many of you have actually asked a teenager how they feel about masks? My daughter, who's going to be a sophomore this year, and I had a conversation, and she said, "Mom, it's really not about the masks, it's about everything that comes with it." She went on to say, "Last year at school, we were so isolated from each other. Even in class, we weren't allowed to interact. We sat six feet apart from each other, and we pretty much sat in silence every single day. And then, depending on what class you were grouped, that's how your lunch tables were assigned." As an example, she said, "One day, it was just me and one other person at lunch. Our assigned seats were several tables away from each other. Since it was just us, we asked if we could sit near each other, meaning maybe just one table apart? They were quickly told no, because they had to contact, or contact trace." Made no sense to these teenagers. The food was all prepackaged and horrible. She actually felt sorry for the children that didn't have lunches that they could bring from home. They had to do PE with their masks on. The teacher didn't make them do their normal physical activity, which is actually the worst thing for them, they needed their exercise. So, they sat and they answered questions. Even going to the library changed for them. They weren't allowed to pick out books. When they got there, they had a table set out with 20 pre-selected books, and that's what they had to choose from. So, it, it wasn't just about the masks for them. Now, is there apparent what I remember? I remember my daughter spending endless hours on the phone with her friends, who were failing their classes and begging for her help. She said, "Mom, how can I say no?" I remember having talks with her on how to help her friends who felt that life couldn't go on. They couldn't survive the isolation, they were just lonely teenagers. So, can these kids wear a piece of cloth over their face? Yes, they can, but it's about more than the masks, isn't it? Some adults want to simplify it, they want to say, "Just wear the mask." And if these kids express any of their feelings, we tell them, "You're selfish, just do the right thing." Well, they've done as we've asked. They followed the rules. They're not dirty superspreaders. Can we just show them some grace and set an example? Let them sit this fight out. We don't need this for them. That's what I have to say.
Next speaker is Heather Ann Walker Brown, followed by Megan Hogan, or Hagan, I apologize.
In the interest of preserving a bit of humanity, would you, on the council, please raise your hands if you're a parent? Thank you. The government has a repulsive history of using its citizens as test subjects, and children have often been the discarded raw material of medical research. In the 90s, the CDC tested a measles vaccine on non-U.S. babies, which caused immune issues and death. Knowing this, the CDC gave 1,500 babies in Los Angeles the vaccine without telling parents of its experimental, non-FDA-approved status. Those children died at an alarming rate, up to three years after injection. Hepatitis experiments were conducted on mentally handicapped children in New York. The children were unable to consent to the experiments and often died. During questioning, the officials rationalized that hepatitis was prevalent in the institution, and the children would eventually contract it anyway. Operations Big Buzz Dropkick, Big itch, and Sea Spray conducted biological warfare potential testing on its citizens in Georgia and San Francisco. The government enrolled citizens in a syphilis study without their consent, where they were intentionally denied treatment over a period of 40-plus years. Many died, spouses were infected, and children were born with congenital syphilis. The government sprayed radium-226 radiation on neighborhoods right here in St. Louis for over 10 years. In the Cutter Incident, more than 200,000 children were mass vaccinated with a defective polio vaccine that caused polio paralysis and death. Some 10% to 30% of the first polio vaccines were contaminated with simian virus 40, a retrovirus from monkeys, which is suspected to cause cancer. The FDA has approved hundreds of medicines as safe over the years, which were later recalled or pulled from market after being found to be harmful to human life. Time after time repeatedly, the government has utterly disregarded the sanctity of human life. Now, imagine you had concerns about subjecting your children, or yourself, to any one of those government experiments that were later identified as unsafe and deadly. You would have been called crazy, a conspiracy theorist, and admonished for questioning the government, possibly committed. Imagine looking up at eight public servants, fallible human beings with their own beliefs, biases, and stereotypes, telling you, "This is what you must do." But submitting your children and yourself to these experiments are for the greater good, and knowing they believe their 80-year-old grandma is more important than the life of your two-year-old child. Looking up at these eight people who think they know how to raise your kids better than you do. Imagine pleading with them to do the right thing and let you make health decisions for your children and yourself, for you know that every person is genetically different with different responses to biological stimuli. Imagine knowing that what might be fine for one person may actually kill your child, which is why health decisions are innately personal and specialize the individual in hearing them disregard you. This is why our founding fathers granted the government limited rights, and upheld the rights of the individual as most important. This is why public servants' chief responsibility is protecting the people's individual rights. You are not our rulers, parents, or dictators. Do not perpetuate the government's ownership and servitude of the people, while knowing its torrid history and rampant disregard for the human lives of its citizens, its children. Be on the right side of history and choose now to let the people make their own decisions about masks, vaccines, and all personal health decisions they may present. Did you hear what I said?
I just said what happens to my body. That's what happens to my body. You say it, as soon as they stop popping, make sure they stop popping.
Our next speaker is Megan Hagan.
I didn't know what happened to my body.
Say it again? I just said what happens to my body.
I just said what happens to my body.
Our next speaker is Megan Hagan, followed by Todd Mosby.
Councilmen and women, Madam Chair, patriots, thank you for being willing to do something and show up here tonight. So, I think amidst the chaos, we have lost track of what is most important, which is our roles. What are our roles? Well, my role as a self-sufficient, autonomous human is to make educated risk-benefit analysis on a minute-by-minute basis. Every day, I evaluate risk. Do I take this step, eat this food, drive this car, wear this mask, taste, take this experimental injection? My mental, physical, and spiritual health and well-being is no one's responsibility but mine. What is your role in this capacity as council members? To protect the rights of the people and uphold the Constitution. That is it. And that should be a relief. You are not responsible for saving lives, that is not even possible. Individuals can mitigate their own risk as they see fit, but death comes for us all. It is the great equalizer. Councilwoman Dunaway may scoff at individuals that come to these meetings in support of liberty and personal responsibility, but we are the very reason you sit in that chair, in this state, in this great nation. It is because men and women like us question the authority of kings, and fought and died to create a nation where consent is given by the governed, by the people. If we are focused on the rights of the collective versus the rights of the individual, which is the sole purpose of government, there are no such things as rights. They are privileges bestowed upon us by mob consent, and just as easily taken away. We, the people, created the government, and the Creator is always superior to its creation. God created man, man created government. You do not have dominion over the rights of man. You are not the grainer or revoker of rights. Rights are God-given, and it's your duty to protect them, nothing more and nothing less. We could go back to the origins of the virus, whether it's created in a lab or a natural phenomenon. We could discuss why and how two weeks turned into a year and a half. Masks, social distancing, school and business closures, our elders dying alone in nursing homes, deaths of despair skyrocketing. We could go back and ask why successful treatments for COVID were suppressed because the emergency youth authorization would never have been allowed if there were effective treatments. This is in the agreement. We could talk about PCR cycle thresholds and why they were so high a piece of fruit tested positive for coronavirus. We could talk about how the animal trials were completely bypassed for warp-speed injections, probably because they wanted to avoid the fact that all the ferrets die this time. But the most disturbing part of all is that it's painfully obvious that COVID, and more importantly, the response to it, is being used to fundamentally change our culture and society. There's a matter of credibility. To hear Councilwoman Dunaway, we have no credibility, because we stood up and left this room after listening to Dr. Page. I have to skip some of this. There will always be viruses, there will always be dangers in this world. If we allow you to legislate how we care for our very bodies and our minds, we will be lost. As William Pitt once said, "Necessity is the plea for infringement of every human freedom. It is the argument of tyrants and is the creed of slaves." Are you a tyrant because I refuse to live as a slave?
Our next speaker is Todd Mosby, followed by Seth Gerlick.
Thank you, council members, for letting me speak, and kind of executive page. I just feel a need since, to kind of move past the mask and the social distancing matter, and, and kind of look at the real matter at hand, so. Spent a lot of talk about the Constitution, so I'm going to just read a little bit of it for us all. The preamble, "We, the people, by declaration, establish government by consent, and in its Constitution, in the Constitution, that we gave a limited, that consent to our ser- wait, it is in the Constitution that we gave and limited that consent to our servants. By establishing and ordaining the Constitution for the United States of America, we, the people, formed a more perfect union. Any servant that varies from our laws and seizes authority- servant that varies from our laws and seizes authority, that we, the people, did not authorize wars against the Constitution, therefore, the people. They are in bad behavior. And it is the duty of we, the people, to remove them from office and try them for treason as provided for in the Constitution. We, the people, created the Constitution to bind down our elected and appointed servants with the chains of the Constitution. Infiltration always starts from within, at the municipal level, and works its way to the state and then the federal. This is what Thomas Jefferson said in a resolution, the Kentucky Resolution in 1798. Put your faith in men, but bind them down with chains of the Constitution. Missouri Constitution, Section 1, source of political power, origin, basis, and aim of government, that all political power is vested in and derived from the people, that government upright originates from the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Now, I do not consider using a medical emergency at the hands of overreaching servants or as acting in the best interest of the people of St. Louis County or the people that our county executive and members of his staff were elected to represent. They're harming children, destroying the livelihoods of thousands of businesses, shut down places of worship, and remove sovereignty of the individual and individual medical choice decisions. For those who have been paying attention during the research, we discern fact from fiction. The fake statistics presented by hospitals backed by a medical mafia, then supported by fear mongering and propaganda by mainstream media are no longer valid. Now, your county charter states the county shall have all powers possible for a county to have under the Constitution and laws of Missouri as fully and completely as though they were specifically enumerated in this charter. These powers shall include, but shall not be restricted to by--
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mosby.
Our next speaker is Seth Gerlach, followed by Julie Sanders.
Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Seth Gerlach. I have a functional medicine practice in Town and Country, 63124. There's been an inherent lack of science when it comes to mask mandates, so I had four questions for the council today. Number one, what is the data that will drive mandates? Is it cases? The CDC is withdrawing the PCR test due to invalidity. What about Kerry Mullis, the PCR inventor, saying, quote, "It doesn't tell you that you're sick." Will it be deaths? We know that Dr. Ezekiel, the Illinois Director of Public Health, stated, "Even if you died of a clear alternate cause, but you had COVID at the same time, it's still listed as a COVID death." We know that 13 states at the end of last year did not mandate masks. Their total deaths per million are now lower than the rest of the country. Are we worried about asymptomatic people? A Wuhan study followed 10 million people. They found zero asymptomatic spread. Dr. Fauci himself said, "A pandemic is never driven by asymptomatic carriers." Number two, masks have been shown to block bacteria, but not viruses. I have gobs of studies here, dozens of studies that prove this here. World Health Organization last year said, "There's no evidence available on masks usefulness to protect nonsick persons." The Biden COVID advisor just yesterday said, "Many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." A CDC study, July this year, said, "In Massachusetts, 85 of the cases in the people were the people who wore masks often. Less than 4% of the cases were people who didn't wear masks." Surgeon General last year tweeted, "Seriously, people, stop buying masks. They are not effective in preventing the general public from catching coronavirus. What's changed?" Number three, masks have negative side effects. Will all of you take responsibility for all the constituents that you forced these mandates upon? Number one, in studies, we see oxygen drop, fatigue, respiratory impairment, carbon dioxide rise, headache, and temperature rise. That's just the beginning. One study in particular shows moisture retention, reuse of cloth masks, and poor filtration results in an increased risk of infection. They showed 97% penetration of cloth masks. If there's a chance for harm, it must be a choice. Number four, we're on month 17 of 14 days to slow the spread. Instead of mandating medical devices, why not inform and empower the people? 94% of all COVID deaths had four comorbidities. 80% of hospitalizations were in the overweight or obese. On the other note, vitamin D, a study showed 10 times less mortality with those with adequate vitamin D levels. Sam Page, if you really care about health, why don't you encourage exercise, sleep, nutrition, vitamin D, vitamin C, quercetin, all the things actually shown in studies to help people prevent coronavirus? We take risks every single day. Being alive is a risk. A large majority of people have a higher chance of dying by being shot or choking on their dinner tonight than dying of coronavirus. The moment the government can choose what we put on or in our bodies is the moment we begin the slippery slope into total tyranny. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Sanders, followed by Haley Walton.
My name is Julie Sanders. I'm from 63011. I'm here for the kids who can't speak for themselves. But before I talk about my main topic, which is fear in mental health and children, Dr. Page, you quote the CDC as if it is an independent government organization with no agenda but studying the science and making recommendations based on that truth. The truth is, it's a quasi-governmental organization with both government and private funding. Through the CDC Foundation, individuals and entities can give and earmark money to the CDC. So if you have millions to throw around, you can set the agenda. A quick glance at their income disclosure shows some very interesting facts. Among the top donors are the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Isn't that the guy who is obsessed with vaccinations and world depopulation? Also, GAVI, G-A-V-I, the Global Vaccine Alliance, also represents Bill Gates. A bunch of money comes from big tech and big pharma. So imagine this, wouldn't it be brilliant if they could scare everybody to death and make them wear a daily reminder of their great danger, so the world would clamor for a simple solution that would make everything go back to normal, and they could make a boatload of money? Wouldn't that be something? So let's not pretend that the CDC is fair and impartial, because we know it's not. Speaking of fear, I'm here to speak for the children. I've done extensive research on childhood trauma, not to earn a degree. No, it's far more personal than that. Most of the academic information that I am sharing comes from Dr. Karen Purvis, who led the Developmental Psychology Department at Texas Christian University. When this whole thing started, I thought, great, we are raising a whole generation of germaphobes. But it's actually so much worse than that. What we have done to our children is horrendous. This narrative, this mask-wearing, this fear porn is scaring our kids to death. They're scared of COVID. You say, well, they should be. It's very dangerous. It's deadly, except it's not to them. They have basically 100% chance of living through it, except for a one-off once in a while. You're more likely to be struck by lightning. But what else are they afraid of? Germs? Yeah, you bet. Other people? Hugs? Touch? Being ostracized? Isolation? Not being able to breathe? Sneezes, coughing, sore throats. Everything is terrifying to them. They're afraid of dying because they drank from a water fountain.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. I will appreciate it. Thank you.
Haley Walton, followed by Leslie Fogarty.
Hello, my name is Haley. My zip code is 63043. First, I want to say thank you to, even though Judge Ellen Roboto is not here, for granting a temporary restraining order against Sam Page's illegal attempts to keep his mask mandate in place. Thank you, Judge. I'm probably not watching this. This fight is truly exhausting and super draining, and we've been doing it for over a year since COVID first started, and I will continue to speak out and will not give up. I do this for my kids and everyone else in St. Louis County that cares about their freedoms. I feel it may be a little repetitive since we were here in the same room seven days ago. But anyways, when it comes to masks, they should always be a choice because there's science that shows they do not stop COVID besides a few droplets of your spit. And masks are for sick people. We are not sick. Okay, now on to vaccines. When death is listed as a possible side effect, there should always be a choice, always. I mean, my body, my choice, right? From CNBC, they said the CDC study shows 74% of people infected in Massachusetts during the COVID outbreak, like recently, like last week, I think, 74% of those people infected were fully vaccinated. And there's no proof that unvaccinated individuals are spreading this virus. This also is happening in many other countries and states where there's a high rate of vaccinated individuals that are spreading COVID. I do not feel that the government should be telling me that I have to have the jab in order to attend society or that I can't go to a restaurant or do whatever if I do not get the vaccine. I mean, it could have a potentially awful side effect. Like, it may not for one person, but it could for me, you know? And it's not even FDA-approved. Okay, now, at last week's hearing, I was obviously there, and I just wanted to say that Paul Berry was not anywhere out of hand or McCawski, sorry if I butchered his name. I saw, if anything, I saw Paul calming down the audience. Oh, sorry, guys. Neither of those two were ever out of line, and for someone like Khan, who supposedly represents St. Louis County Health Department, he's a disgrace, and his last name fits him well with how-- with how he lied to all of us. That being said, Sam Page needs to be recalled and Paul Berry put in his place, because Paul Berry is someone who truly cares about his community and keeping businesses open. Again, it should always be a choice to vax or a choice to
Our next speaker is Leslie Fogarty, followed by Jessica Carter.
Leslie Fogarty, 63135. First off, I want to thank council members Fitch, Harder, Trakus Webb, and Sherewoman Days for removing the mask mandate last week. I hope other governments, local governments, see your courage and follow suit. I am proud to stand with fellow patriots against the mask mandate and push back against wannabe dictator Sam Page. It was apparent by Clancy and Dunaway's obvious disinterest in listening to the people they serve as to how they would vote. Their pre-written, condescending justification for voting their conscience is offensive. You are not sitting where you are to vote your conscience. You are there to represent your constituents. I sincerely, I sincerely hope residents of your district consider running against both of you, so your districts can get true representation of the people. I'd like to point out the first item under unfinished business on the agenda. This item has been on the agenda since March and is in reference to the appointment and confirmation of Mr. Khan. Why is this still under unfinished business? Was he not confirmed? I think after the conduct of Mr. Khan last week, this board should move forward to remove him from his position immediately. His blatant lying, use of an obscene gesture to residents he is supposed to serve, and then blaming everyone but himself for that gesture are not the characteristics of a person I would ever take advice from, much less medical advice. He had little credibility prior to last week. He has none now. I'd also like to ask about the audit into Sam Page's suspicious transactions that Councilman Fitch requested back in April regarding a $2.6 million payout to Boston Consulting Group without an itemized invoice and another $500,000 to Community Catalyst of Boston for a survey. This company is funded by the Open Society Foundation, which is funded by George Soros. It seems that mask mandates are not the only questionable activities Sam Page is involved with. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Carter, followed by Austin Connor.
Hi, I'm Jessica Carter. I'm in 63126. Hey, Lisa, I remember playing basketball with you when we were kids. We were on the green team together. I don't know if you remember me, but I specifically remember calling you the bulldog on our team. And the reason is, you're always stealing the ball. And it was fun back then. You're always taking the ball like this, never giving it back to anyone. But sadly, I think you're doing the same thing today with power. Some of you guys stood up last week, and we applaud you. I am so grateful for you listening to your constituents. I think I could speak for everyone in this room and tell you that we appreciate you listening to us, the people who put you here in this spot. In fact, listening to us, let's ask the people, do we want to be forced to wear Do we want to be forced to take pharmaceutical products of your choosing? Or do we just want to be left in peace to do what we feel is best for ourselves? These are your people. These are the people who put you in these spots. Please listen to us. Council, all we're asking for is the freedom to choose what is best for ourselves. In picking what's best for ourselves, we will be able to calculate and assume the risk for our own choosing. It's far better done on an individual level. For example, vaccines. I've heard rumors that some of you want to institute vaccine mandates, at least for your county employees. And let me tell you that I'm a taxpayer, and I pay for your county employees, and I don't want them vaccinated if they don't want to be vaccinated. I want them to have that choice. But here's the thing about vaccines. It's better to do on an individual level, because only an individual will know if they have allergies or if they might have some kind of reaction or, you know, anything that could be in their medical history, which, by the way, isn't asked in those drive-through vaccine clinics where they just shoot you up with whatever, no matter if you're a 10-pound infant, which we all know that's coming, or if you're a 90-year-old, all the vaccines are given the same way to every single person. What other drug do we do that with? We don't. We don't. Here's the thing. Science is never settled. In fact, everyone who parrots the same information over and over and refuses to have a discussion, saying hashtag because science, they don't understand science at all. Science is meant to include discussion, debate, critical thinking, perspective, all information. And science naturally evolves. And that's why I'm not even mad that we have had different advisories, but the thing is, we need to be able to choose what we want, because in the end, we don't want to look back and say, you were wrong, and we were just wanting to do our own thing. That's
Next speaker is Austin Connor, followed by McKenna Sewerman.
Hello, I am Austin, 63026. I want to preface this by saying that I am not a radical. I am not even a Republican. I am a concerned citizen. And I am not even particularly concerned about a mask mandate as much as I am concerned about what comes next. The government has a history of working closely with large corporations to sabotage our mental and physical health for their own benefit. For example, cigarettes. At some point in history, they trusted the science. But the science of that time was paid for by tobacco companies who said that their products were not addictive. And then there was the opiate crisis. If you had an accident, your doctor might have given you OxyContin, a highly addictive opiate that should have never been approved. Your prescription runs out, and you end up buying drugs off the street or needing more medications like Suboxone just to get clean again. Diabetics, the government allows these companies to hike up the price of insulin because they know you're dying to get your hands on it. These are systems that benefit from making us ill. So to me, the most obvious conspiracy here is the cash grab and power grab going on at the expense of the people. These vaccine companies are making billions. Project Veritas exposed that these companies are paying the media to promote it. These companies pay the fact-checkers, and they're suppressing any information about potential alternatives because they don't want the competition. Very soon, we may be required to get a vaccine that is still not fully FDA-approved. Very soon, we may be required to get a vaccine that is still not fully FDA approved, and then booster shots, just so we are allowed to interact with society like a monthly subscription service to freedom. Our ability to live our lives as we know it could be held hostage by an unholy union of government and corporation. I am concerned about more than just masks. I am concerned that our politicians, the officials who are supposed to work for us, to represent us, have sold us out. I am concerned that they are willing to sell our physical and mental health, our sanity, our livelihoods, our dignity, and our freedom for their own financial gain. We want to know where you stand. We want to know that you still see us as human beings and not as livestock or dollar signs. We want to know that you will not sell us out too.
Next speaker is McKenna Sauerman, followed by Angie Isaac.
Good evening. So to start with, masks and the vaccine are, we are told, our best defense against COVID. We are told that we must live in fear of it and submit to the civil government when they choose to mask and vaccinate us without our consent. We are told that we must not live lest we die, and that it is not our decision whether or not to accept the risk, but that the civil government must make our decisions for us. This is an excerpt from Councilwoman Clancy's statement last week. "I trust that with the politics aside, we will be able to work together to protect your health. That is, after all, what you elected us to do." The problem with this statement, Councilwoman Clancy, is that we did not elect you to manage our personal health or to make our personal health decisions for us. These next words that I would like to recite were spoken in the context of a prospective war. They were the passionate pleas of a man who was willing to pledge his life, his fortune, and his sacred honor. It was a different situation, but I thought that these words were worth repeating in the context of preserving the liberty they fought so hard to pass down to us. Is life so dear, or peace so sweet, to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery? Forbid it, Almighty God. I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death."
Our next speaker is Angie Isaac, followed by Ben Brown.
Hi, I'm Angelina Isaac, ZIP code 63040, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, based upon council findings, I just want to say that Dr. Khan is either very delusional, or he's a liar. And both of those must disqualify him from serving St. Louis County. The people demand his resignation or his termination. Second, on the 28th of July, Councilwoman Clancy wrote a letter saying that council was elected to protect our health. None of you were elected to protect my health. That is my job. You were elected to protect and uphold my God-given rights as stated in the Missouri and US constitutions. My body, my choice. Councilwoman Clancy, you are a threat to liberty. Third, the council has still not given the people any data. We want to know what test are you using to test for COVID? We want to know, does that test tell the difference between COVID and influenza? We want to know what specific test you are using to test for Delta variant? We want to know how many patients have had mild symptoms versus moderate versus severe requiring hospitalization? I also have to say, I'm thankful that last week you rescinded the mask edict. I'm concerned because I think it was done because Sam Page overstepped his boundaries. I'm not convinced it was done to preserve our liberty. That worries me. And we see through that lack of transparency. Fourth, regarding mandatory vaccines, I think that was brought up possibly for government employees. I encourage all of you to look at your demographics. As of the 19th of July, the CDC reported 61% of the white population has received at least one dose of the vaccine. 12% of the black population, 17% of the Hispanic population have gotten one dose. If you care so much for your constituents, if you respect them, if you respect their autonomy, if you respect their intelligence, do not attempt to thwart their ability to make decisions that are best for themselves and their family. We are Americans.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
The Constitution of the United States, the Missouri Constitution, represent our laws, not dictums and mandates handed down for political purpose and control.
Our next speaker is Ben Brown, followed by Jennifer Barker.
Last week, I stood here, and I warned of the dangers posed by a breakdown in trust between our public health officials and those they are meant to protect. I spoke about how this breakdown in trust has manifested itself as hesitancy among many to get the vaccine. To my dismay, instead of seeking to mend that relationship, the response to this call, to this call was to break down that trust even further by bringing forth false accusations of racist comments and physical assault by an angry mob, and injecting even more polarization and hostility into an already volatile situation. When I first read Dr. Khan's letter, I disagreed with his description of events in the chamber, but I reserved judgment on what may have occurred once he left the room. Now that we've seen the security footage and heard testimony from the officer escorting him, it's clear that this was nothing more than a farce. After a St. Louis public radio interview yesterday, I'm not even sure that it was him that wrote the letter. This has to stop, and the continued politicization of our health departments is destructive and irresponsible. Following this false and clearly politically motivated letter, we were told that a person who was in the council chambers that day had tested positive for COVID-19. We were also told that everyone who attended that meeting was advised to quarantine for a length of time that would prevent any of those citizens from providing public comments in this meeting, as well as the meeting yesterday where his accusations were addressed. If we have public health officials willing to bring forth false allegations of physical assault to try and control a political narrative, would it really be that hard to believe they'd be willing to fabricate a positive test result for the same reason? We simply don't know, which is why this loss of credibility is so dangerous. If the statements to the press about the positive test result are false, then we have a serious failure of leadership in this community that needs to be addressed. If the statements about the positive tests are true, then we have an even bigger problem because any faith in the leadership in our health departments has eroded to the point where you can no longer discern what's being said in the interest of public health and what's being said in the interest of controlling a political narrative. Now, I don't know if the blame falls squarely on Dr. Khan, or he just found himself in an unfortunate position where he was used as a political pawn, but we are where we are. It's clear that anything short of a resignation at this point constitutes a very real hazard to public health. In conclusion, whether you're for mask mandates or against them, I think one thing that we can all agree on is that our community is far more polarized and divided now than at any point before this mandate was announced. You can't change the hearts and minds of people by using force. And it's time to start finding ways to come together and navigate our way through this pandemic as a community. It's time to put this issue to bed, and thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Barker, followed by Miriam Kalash.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Barker from 63021. Our freedoms are being rapidly stripped away from us. 2020 has been a year of total 2020 vision, and we certainly now know who truly cares about us and who has political agendas. We need elected officials to take their oath seriously. Mandates of any medical procedure is completely wrong. Unfortunately, many things about these unapproved products are unknown. We have to try and dig by doing Google searches to try and find out what exactly even the ingredients are. I spoke up here before to you. I shared with you that the three injections being used in the US were tested or produced using aborted fetal tissue, that P E R C six aborted fetal cells were used in production on the J and J shot. H E K two nine three aborted fetal tissue was used in testing of Moderna and Pfizer injections. PEG is also known as an ingredient in these jabs. Polyethylene glycol, PEG, has never been used in an injectable before. It's been used in ingestible medications, but never an injectable. This is a highly allergenic chemical that many people have allergic reactions to. It could very possibly be why we see so many anaphylactic reactions to these jabs. Benefits and risks are not known because we have no long-term studies done. They're currently doing long-term studies now. Humans are being used as human lab rats. They're under a horrible, horrific emergency use authorization that is fraudulent. To grant an EUA, an emergency use authorization, there cannot be an alternative treatment. We have seen over and over again that ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine have done exactly that. Why are doctors being suppressed? In the hospitals, the doctors can't even prescribe these treatments. They can't because if they did, they couldn't use this emergency use authorization to push this jab in our arms. The citizens deserve to receive true informed consent. They deserve to know all of these things before doing any type of medical procedure. And taking care of our bodies by eating a healthy diet, by exercising, getting good sleep, and supplementing ourselves is what will keep us healthy. We need, if we have nutritional deficiencies, we need to address those. We need to hear this from the doctors, but the doctors that publicly speak about this are facing lawsuits and facing losing their license. Did I mention before when I was up here about the PREP Act? The PREP Act removes liability from the pharmaceutical companies. So if you're injured or you die from an injection, they're not liable. Taxpayer money funds a program to pay out for injury and death. It's possible you might get a payout. Why would these companies care to produce a safe product if they don't have liability? We know there's a political agenda trying to control us here and use fear, trying to spread misinformation through the mainstream media, and it's absolutely disgusting. We know that the Delta variant is 99.7% identical to the original Wuhan flu, and yes, it's a higher infection rate, but a less, far less death rate.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Miriam Kalash, followed by Ryan McGowan.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen and mother. It was painful, some of the things that I saw last week, trying to villainize those who do not agree. I am a mother. I take my job as a mother more seriously than anything that has ever come across my path. I'm here tonight to implore you to vote no on any further COVID-19 mandates. It is not the job of this county council, our state, or federal government to mandate and regulate what is healthy and safe for me, my body, and my children's body. This is each personal citizen's responsibility, and this is the American way. The citizens of this county who want this vaccine most likely have already gotten it or know where to get it. You have nonstop put that in front of the people. If we want that, we already have it. Stop forcing and mandating what some of us do not want and what we do not need. Many of us already have natural immunity. Stop ignoring the science. You say follow the science, but it ought to be true health data and science, not politically driven science. You say follow CDC guidelines. I ask you, what do you know about the CDC, who is on their board? Where does their money come from? What vested interest do they have in these vaccines? How can they be truly trusted when they are a for-profit private entity? We should normalize asking questions. After all, isn't that how we learn? That is what I do with my kids all day, every day. They ask me questions. I say if I don't know the answer, I will go find it. We should not be name-calling, and we should not be calling those who have questions conspiracy theorists. We need you, our elected officials, to start asking better questions. Dig into the data and science for yourself instead of just parroting national narratives. Be true leaders and dare to be different. Find out and know what psychological effects these masks are having on our children. Lastly, I echo the words of Thomas Jefferson. I prefer dangerous freedom over peaceful slavery.
Our next speaker is Ryan McGowan, followed by James McGee.
Ryan McGowan, 63021. Last week, I spoke, I guess I wasn't specific enough because I haven't heard anything. My concern is mostly with Dr. Khan's statements referring to the council a number of times about businesses being in charge of enforcing mask mandates. Got me thinking, there's code of ordinances. There's City of Clayton code, no smoking sign, just on the backside of that pillar. So I got some looking discriminatory practices prohibited. This is the St. Louis County Code Number 28056. It was updated April 16th of this year. Said it shall be discriminatory practice for the owner, let's see, manager, proprietor, concessionaire, custodian, agent, or employee of a place of public accommodation within an unincorporated area of St. Louis County, meaning if it is incorporated, that municipality takes over, their code takes over, to treat any person differently in the sale of a commodity and the use of facility, or to segregate or acquire the placing of a person in a separate section of the premise or facility because of race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, or gender. It also says later in that code that it's discriminatory to post or place signage suggesting that that is the case. So all your mask required signs as of this moment are not up to code. I'm wondering, because the ADA considers asthma a disability, which would also, under every previous mask mandate, mean that I have a medical exemption to masks. How are we going to, if business owners are the police of masks, who is, when is code enforcement going to be sent out to make sure that all businesses within St. Louis County are required to remove their signage and make sure that everyone who has asthma, COPD, a deviated septum, the list went on and on about medical exemptions, deaf people, people trying to communicate with someone who is deaf or hard of hearing? This is St. Louis County code. It needs to be addressed. Every sign on every business within St. Louis County needs to be removed. I'm wondering when, I'm wondering when the council will meet with the people required, code enforcement, and meet with the municipalities so that they can get their code enforcement on it. I mean, what avenues do you have to go down? I think it's important that you make this, you put out a presser stating that these signs are illegal, and how you will be, how you will go about enforcing it, because this is a great way to, this is a great preventative measure so that we don't have to go through this all again. It's the code, it needs to be abided.
Our next speaker is James McGee, followed by 63112.
County Executive. Honorable Madam Chair, St. Louis County Council, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am a Vietnam veteran. We fought. I saw soldiers lose limbs. They shed their blood, and they fought, and they died. They made the ultimate sacrifice and died. They paid the price. Freedom is not free. There is a price to pay, and that price is give us the choice to choose whether we want to wear the mask or we do not want to wear the mask. We have a choice. Even God gave us a choice. First of all, I want to First of all, I want to thank all of those that voted to keep the law in place last week, especially Honorable Shalana Webb and the Madam Chair, Rita Daze. Y'all had the courage to stand up and do the right thing, and we really appreciate that. I want to personally thank you for that. Also, Sam Page, you need to respect the chair and talk to Rita Daze, have them at the table. You cannot make the decision by yourself. The governor signed, it says the governing board. And also Donna, the one over that side. Donaway, we did not elect you to make the decision for District One or District Four. We chose them to make the decision for us, not you. You stick with your voters, and we stick with our elected official.
Our next speaker is Farah Khan Shagagh, followed by Matthew Shutter.
Good evening. I'm going to switch my wording up a little bit because my phone is about to die, so I want to make sure that I read this off. "We do not need allies more devoted to order than to justice." The Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. wrote in the spring of nineteen sixty-four, refusing calls from moderate black and white leaders to condemn a planned highway stallant to highlight systemic racism in New York. "I hear a lot of talk these days about I Direct Action Talk alienating former friends," he added. "I would rather feel they are bringing to the surface latent prejudices that are already there if..." My phone died. But in other words, if our allies are not afraid or get disappointed when we stand up for what's right, they were never our allies to begin with. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here, councilwoman, councilwoman, and councilman. I'm not here as a, as a freaking Democrat or as a freaking Republican. I'm here as a young man, as a constituent of Chairwoman Rita Hurdase. And I don't, I'm not a fan or supporter of Democrats because FDR dropped the New Deal. I didn't, I'm not a fan or supporter of Democrats because Barack Obama was the first black president. I'm not a friend of Republicans, they say, because Colin Powell lied about weapons of mass destruction. Or I'm not just this person that's come to speak before this council to just be frustrated or to be disappointed about all of the chaos that we're facing here in our county today. I'm here because right now while we're having this debate, there's hundreds of people are being kicked out of their homes because a moratorium eviction was lifted. We have parents right now who are going to work trying to decide, should I go to work, take a vaccine, or stay home because my kid can't go to school because they're not getting vaccinated? So it brings me to my point that for a person to get up and speak to a large audience and say, these individuals are not Democrats or not Republicans because they stood up for what they thought was right. So my direct message goes to Council Lady Kelly Dunaway from District Two. I dare you disrespect the voters of the first district and the fifth district and to say that the people who we elected are unfit to be leaders. I dare you insult our intelligence. We voted for these individuals, and they are representing us with dignity and respect. So I love you, just know that we are here to support, that we're here to love unconditionally.
Thank you.
And we gonna represent for you. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Our next speaker is Matthew Shutter, followed by John Huck.
Thank you very much. I live in six-three-zero-six-nine. I'm a pastor at Church of the Word in six-three-zero-two-six in Fenton, Missouri. I do most of my shopping at stores in St. Louis City and St. Louis County because I own property in the city. And so this very much is very important to me, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to address you. I want to just talk about, you know, the importance of persuasion. I heard Dr. Khan say last week something about if you don't make this choice, people are going to die. And it's so important, even with good intentions, that we persuade one another. One person believes something very strongly is harmful, someone else believes something is beneficial, but we need to be able to persuade each other to make those choices. I'm a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. I believe that the Word of God is the inerrant, inspired Word of God. I believe that Jesus Christ is God incarnate. I believe He died for our sins and rose from the dead, as evidenced by over five hundred witnesses. And I spend my life trying to persuade people to turn from their sins and put their faith in Jesus Christ. And I believe the consequences of not doing that will have eternal consequences. Now, some of you on the council probably think I'm an idiot for believing that. Okay, then I haven't persuaded you, but my job is to persuade you. You have to make a choice where you stand. And I would just urge you to allow people the freedom to consent. I looked up the definition of battery. In criminal law, it says, this is from Cornell Law School, in criminal law, this is a physical act that results in harmful or offensive contact with another person without that person's consent. In tort law, it's very similar. It involves consent, not just harmful, but offensive. I don't want to be fined. I don't want to be sued. I don't want my children taken from my home, and I absolutely will not consent to them getting a vaccine. I don't believe in it. If you believe in it, that is your choice to believe in it. Persuade people, but do not force us against our will to have something done to us that, by the way, what's the effect of vaccines over a forty-year period? What's the effects over a lifetime of vaccines and booster shots? Do we know? You say you believe in science. Has this been tested? Do we have observable, demonstratable, repeatable results about the long-term use of vaccines? If you have faith in doctors and pharmaceutical companies, and you believe that their word is inerrant, infallible, if you believe in the inspiration of the CDC, I don't. That's your choice. I believe in the Word of God. I will try to persuade you. Persuade people. Don't use force. This is America. Persuade people. This is why we have in our First Amendment.
Madam Chair.
Is persuade people. Don't force people. Persuasion, consent.
Our next speaker is John Huck, followed by Lynn Huck.
My name is John Huck. Business owner, St. Louis County, Jackson County. I've been here before, two thousand sixteen, against Sam Page, stood at the table across Sam Page. I watched him parade kids. I watched him parade the American Heart Association, et cetera, et cetera, to attack my industry. I'm not here for that. I'm here for the mask, okay? I'm not a racist. Let me get that out of the way, because we was in Florida last week when all this went on. And I'm not getting, I'm not being paid to be here. I'm not political, I'm not none of that. I don't have a speech and none of that for none of y'all. I just know that Sam Page thinks it's his way or the highway. I'm a business owner. You're making me tell customers that they have to wear a mask to come into my businesses. I refuse to do it. I'm not going to. Period. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a tax collector. I collect retail taxes for y'all. I collect state taxes. I collect federal taxes. I just pay taxes. That's what I believe in doing. I don't mind it. I don't work for free. I rote you not for free or none of that. Like I said, I'm here to address Sam Page. I see some of this going on, some of the races and all that. You know, that's political stuff. I don't care about that. But Sam Page, you want to make me do things? You're just not going to do it. You're going to have to put me in jail. I was going to sue you the last time. I shut my doors down for five weeks last year in April. I locked my doors, told my employees to go home. You're not getting a paycheck because Sam Page made me close or y'all or whatever it was. I abided by it. Sam, a law-abiding citizen. So all that's over with. I'm one of the ones you're trying to protect. I'm sixty years old. I'm a diabetic. I've got high blood pressure. I'm fat, I'm overweight, you know? I'm just being honest. You're trying to protect me. My mother died at St. Mercy Hospital four and a half years ago from the flu that she got from a nursing home. Where's the protection? Where were y'all trying to protect her then? You know, I'm from Memphis. I moved here in two thousand seven. I love St. Louis. It's a good city. Memphis is a good city too, but I moved here, I didn't see all that racist and all that stuff here like I see in Memphis, until I guess two thousand fourteen, fifteen, whatever it was. Yeah, I appreciate everything that y'all do. The Sam Page, I just feel like you're narcissists. I just feel like you try to control everything. I've seen the problems you've had with the council about trying to sell somebody they're going to be the head leader or whatever it is, you know? I will, I'm not, like I said, I'm not a Magna guy. I don't, you know, drive a truck and all that like everybody wants, like the news wants to say. You know, I stopped watching news because y'all use the news to attack us, to divide the country, to divide the people. And that's what's going on in this county and y'all's county. Y'all represent us. You represent us, Sam Page. I don't even know how you're up there. How do you get reelected?
Our next speaker is Lynn Huck, followed by Angela Brune.
I'm Lynn Huck, zip code six-three-zero-two-six. I'm not going to be as nice as my husband. Sam Page, you are a narcissist and control freak, and I'm tired of trying to obey every little law he wants to mandate. I am sixty years old. I've never in my life had a vaccine, never intended on getting one, never had the flu shot, never had pneumonia. But I got this one because y'all promised me I could get rid of the mask if I did. Now you want to put the mask back on my face after I've gotten the vaccine. Does the vaccine work or not? Yes or no? If you're hounding everybody to get this vaccine, it must work, right? Why the mask? If we've been vaccinated, why the mask? If it works, why? Y'all make no sense.
Our next speaker is Angela Brune, followed by Yolanda Henderson.
Hello. My name is Angela Bruni. I'm zip code six-three-one-two-six. First of all, if you would have told me a year and a half ago that I would be speaking at my county council, I would have laughed in your face, never thought I would be here in my life. But I have to say that this whole year and a half, I truly understand what that American flag means. I feel like I've grown up my whole life, you know, thinking I thought I knew what it meant, but I can truly say that I know what it means now. The past year and a half, I've truly understand what it feels like to have your rights infringed upon, and I think we can all feel that this past year and a half. So these proposed mandates, they violate our individual liberties. They've clearly become a means to leverage control, invasion, and regulation into citizens' personal and private lives. These mandates lead toward an extremely slippery slope of dictatorship behavior, whether it's intentional or not, that is how we see it. And not to mention segregation and division among the community. Where there is risk, there must absolutely be choice. If people don't have the right to have their personal autonomy over their bodies, over their own bodies, over their own health decisions, then their civil liberties are violated and eroded. It is unethical and unconstitutional. This has never been about health, and maybe it has, I don't know, but to a lot of people here, this has never been about health. And we know that, and I think some of you up there know that too. If the agenda were really for public health, then why have we not seen any promotion from the council, from the media, from any news outlet about steps towards taking, getting to one's personal health under control, promoting and informing people of making healthy choices, eating nutritious foods, getting an adequate amount of sleep, proper hydration, exercising daily, getting sunshine daily, avoiding products and foods that contain toxins? Think of how many lives could have been helped in an entire year in health had we been promoting and informing people how to actually turn their health around and get it under control. That's enough time to completely change your body, mind, and overall health. Instead, we've seen the push for fear. Cover your face, hide your home, remove human reaction, close your business, close your place of worship, and push unhealthy incentives for the vaccine.
Ms. Bruni?
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Henderson, followed by Carla Gruy.
Good evening to everyone that is on the roster. My name is Yolanda Henderson. I am from the city of Jennings. It's with all this going on and everything, I can't get through two phone lines to my county council person, so I decided to come to the council. I'm having, what you want to say, a lot of complaints in the city of Jennings. And I will ask, and I don't know how to go about this, I know how to do it in my city, but I don't know how to go about this, but we're having a lot of deaths in the city of Jennings due to a lot of traffic accidents. I'm asking that we do a traffic study on the streets of Lewis and Clark and Jenny Station Row, where I lost a young man that his car split in half, and that this car, but he was speeding, but he left two beautiful children behind. Jenny Station Row in Halls Ferry, when one person stopped, then there's a chain reaction of different cars all over the place. They wind up at Walgreens, they wind up at McDonald's, and then at St. Seer and Lewis and Clark. Now, all these streets are in the city of Jennings. I'm asking that we do a traffic study. I'm looking to probably ask for a roundabout to slow these people down. Too many people, every time I turn around, I get a phone call, hey, it's another traffic accident over here, another, 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 another. But like I said, we're going to be burying this young man on Friday. Also, with all this going on with the mask and all that stuff, I have my own opinions, I'm going to keep my own opinions to myself. The officer that we have as a captain in the city of Jennings, I'm very appalled because I had came home on a Sunday one day, and I had, and I picked up with the officers that did come, ten bullet casings that someone was shooting right behind my car. I was ducking because I didn't know where it was coming from. So I told the captain that I have footings of the particular car. I don't have the guy, I have footings. He told me he was going to send a police officer over to my house so they can get the, you know, the picture of the car. Because after, you know, everything kind of died down, he came back through again, but he wasn't shooting, but I saw the car again. But this captain just stays in his, in his office, and it's like, we don't even see him. But for him to leave me hanging like that, that's appalling, and I'm sitting on the Jennings City Council. I'm very appalled, and his name is Captain Law. But like I said, you know, I'm just here because I can't get through to you, Rita, because I know all the stuff that's going on and everything, but also residents are asking that the police be more visible in the city of Jennings, and that's all I'm asking.
Our next speaker is Carla Gruy, followed by Maurice Bishop.
Thank you very much. I live in six-three-one-two-two. I wanted to thank all of you here for being present in front I wanted to thank all of you here for being present in front of the people that you represent. It means a lot. I'm sure it's hard to constantly have issues that are brought before you, and I feel like often they are purposeful distractions from the oath that you took and are trying to uphold. I'm asking those of you who are honest and who have integrity, I'm asking you to reread your oath often and also to follow it with a short question for yourself each time before you decide to vote. If I vote yes, will I be upholding the constitutional rights of the citizens? If you always ask yourself this question before you vote, then you will be putting government in its proper role. If you ever feel yourself struck by fear, I hope that you will stop and pray. 365 times, the Bible tells us not to be afraid. We are not meant to live in fear or to be controlled by it. With difficult decisions, ask for the hand of God to bring you peace and wisdom. Don't ask a dishonest county executive who thinks he is a dictator rather than a public service servant whose entire time is supposed to be devoted to the role of government protecting our individual constitutional rights. Rights that are given to us by God, not by man. And finally, we are all children of God. United we stand. Please do not allow political ploys to divide us because divided we will fall. We, the people, we are not afraid. Please do not protect us, just protect, protect our constitutional liberties. And thank you for your selflessness. I pray that you will help preserve America right here in St. Louis County so that we don't feel the need to immigrate and start over with our families and our businesses to an area that honors us, God's children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maurice Bishop followed by Stephanie Usher. Is Maurice here? Madam Chair, we are going to move to Stephanie Usher followed by Joan Hoffman.
Stephanie here? Oh, is she coming? Okay.
I came because I've been silent all the past year and a half that this has been going on, though I'd never agreed with masking. I've had two kids in school have been behind masks. Before this pandemic happened, I went with my family. We were patients of Dr. Eric Napooti, who's been an outspoken champion against masks and vaccines. He is one of the experts that I trust. Another expert I trust is named Sally Fallon-Moral, and I've been following her for a long time and she has been the influence on how I feed my family and look at nutrition and health. And because of her, it is my understanding that our response to COVID is based on something that is a theory called the germ theory. This is not a fact. We're not responding to facts. There's another theory called terrain theory that opposes the germ theory that says that it is our environment that makes us sick more so than the germs that are present in that environment. And that to seek health, we don't seek to destroy germs, but we seek to improve the environment. So our health comes from our food and from clean air. And I believe masks are harming us. I believe these vaccines are harming us, and I believe we should have the freedom to seek the medical treatment that we choose rather than to have it mandated from our government. I've never been a conservative or a Republican. I used to vote Democrat and then I moved to Libertarian. And, um, I just wanted you to know that the face of the people who are against these mandates are not just Republicans, but I appreciate the conservatives who know the Constitution and protect it well and teach us all because I didn't realize how much the government was supposed to protect our rights and not be mandating for us what to do. So I hope you'll protect us and I hope you will not force masks or vaccines on anyone, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joan Hoffman followed by Paul Berry.
My name is Joan Hoffman, 63038. I'm going to start by saying thank you to those of you who voted last week against one man rule in St. Louis County. We appreciate it. Okay, beyond that, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I'm not happy. That's because once again, I have to come here and talk about mask mandates. Now, let me explain, I don't have to come here obviously, but, and I'm going to be upfront here, I didn't even realize that I could come here until COVID, so we'll give that a little bit of credit, just a little. However, now that I know that I can come here, I want to talk about something else. We have problems in this county and they're not getting solved. And yet we are talking about mask mandates over and over and over. Okay? Last week, this council voted to rescind the mask mandate. The next morning, Sam Page went against Missouri law and told the media that mask mandate still stands. Sam Page sued to make sure St. Louis County would be governed according to what he wants. Now, I'm going to ask right now, is that what our tax dollars are for?
No.
Okay, well, we all know that. Thank you. Okay, so I want to use my time to talk about the other problems. What are we going to do about crime? Ms. Webb, I heard you last week when you talked and I want to help. I haven't called you yet, but I've been busy. I'm sorry. However, I'm going to say this. My daughter has this thing. She bought it, it's called a experience booklet. It's little offers to go to different local businesses throughout the county and the city. Some of those local businesses are in Florissant. I wouldn't have gone otherwise, but she said, no, we're going to support every one of these that we can. So we went. Florissant has some really nice restaurants and bakeries. I want to see more. How about more of that and less liquor stores? But can we solve that problem? No, because I have to. We have to keep coming here and voting on mask mandates. I think we all know who wants it and who doesn't by now. Okay? And I'm going to make another point. Kelly Dunaway, I am not about conspiracy theories. I'm going to go on record right now, when I ask about treatments, I want to know how we cure people. This is not about conspiracy, so please do not misquote me. Thank you. Everyone in St. Louis County wore masks for an entire year, but people still got COVID. Sam Page said it got so bad that he was forced to close down the restaurants right before Christmas. Are we going to keep doing the same thing over and over when it doesn't work? All right, now. And another thing, let's please stop trying to blame this Delta variant on the one or two people that you saw in a grocery store that didn't have a mask on. Sorry about that. Most of us were wearing masks. We don't want the mandate and we're going to keep coming back the more you bring it up, so let's just drop it and move on. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Berry followed by Jennifer Byrd.
Paul Berry, Maryland Heights, Missouri, Madam Chairwoman, Honorable Counsel. Last week when we were here, I saw something that I honestly, and I've seen a lot in politics. I know all of you guys personally, right? But I think that we're missing the mark here. When Dr. Khan throws an obscenity in front of children and adults that were out there, his excuse to the council was, well, I was beaten or pushed, harassed, racism, and apparently we got to his head, okay? Apparently I'm living rent-free in Dr. Khan's head. But it has nothing to really do with him, ladies and gentlemen, because had I stayed at home, this same thing would have happened. First Amendment retaliation, when there is no explanation for the lies that Dr. Khan said, it was to intimidate these people that showed up against the order. It's clear as day. And then I see Lisa Clancy do an interview where she says last 30 that she believes Khan, she wasn't even in the chambers. But out of everybody that was in the chambers, police, Democrats, Republicans, Martians, okay? All said that this didn't happen. Dr. Page, you and I have been political adversaries. What people don't know is, I used to chat with you in the hall, you are a more honorable man than you get credit for. Okay, I will say that to you. But Dr. Page, I will say this, is standing in front of this council saying that there's good in you, I will believe there's no good in you. If you don't do what I know that you would have done as my councilman, you would have fired Khan on the spot. You guys are saying you're doing investigations. When's the investigation coming? How is your spokesperson saying that people are going to be punished when the law enforcement of this county said it didn't happen? Get rid of the politics. When Hazel Irby, our good friend, died, I stood right here and looked at you, sir, and I said, the chamber isn't for games. Whatever games that may have been played between all of us before, it was supposed to be done there. But the next time that I show up, there is this issue. Kelly Dunaway, Lisa Clancy, no black man has a right to which a white man must respect. That gentleman that said that was from St. Louis, Dred Scott, there's a statue out there where you guys like to go and have your beers and hang out with your friends. Bottom line is this, if you can't take it within yourself, then not worry about your own political standing to listen to the black women that were elected to your office. I can't do much about you, Ms. Clancy, but Ms. Dunaway, I live in your district. I have no problem working on a recall against you. I'm out of time, I'm out of time. Dr. Page, sir, you have public comment coming up here shortly. You should be addressing Khan. And if you do not address Khan, I will go after you like I always have. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Is this Ms. Berry? Ms. Berry, you might be our last one. I think we'll be ending at 8:35, so come on, come on. But I'm sorry, I thought she said Berry.
It is my brother.
Next.
Okay, all right.
No, no.
I apologize.
They'll make up lots more. I'm sure there's more to be made up. Oh my gosh, the recall of Kelly Dunaway, you'll have to milk that single motherhood thing all over again for your campaign. And, and also, I brought you up first because I think maybe you should be canceled because didn't you swear in on a Dr. Seuss book and wasn't he found to be racist? So, I don't know, maybe we should go back and look at the pictures. Anyway, mask, don't mask. Vaccinate, don't vaccinate. Get off my back. And I'm saying that to you three on the screen burning my eyes now because you don't understand, and I'll exclude Mr. Trakus from that because he actually voted correctly last week, so I'll, I'm grateful for that. But you, you three are the epitome of tyranny. And I hope the filthy tyranny that's all over your hands is smeared all over your children. What you have done to this community, taking businesses away from people, ruining children's experiences in school, you guys are promoting a situation that's going to create post-traumatic stress disorder on a lot of people and it's shameful and, and you're an embarrassment as a medical doctor. A virus can pass through a mask. The mask, one mask, two masks, three masks, four masks. That sounds like a Dr. Seuss book. Ridiculous. Okay? Done. We're done and we're over with it. Let me look the right ones of you in the eye. I'm sorry, I was remiss not to have taken care of the best first, but I'll go to the best again last. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for your cool, level-headedness and your understanding, and I mean that sincerely. I thank you equally with the sincere amount of gratitude and I hope that you continue to work well with everyone, which you, is what you've demonstrated thus far, and ignore the political labels because they got outlet malls because there's an awful lot of mismarks out there. In fact, you three are like Marxists and you shouldn't be here and I'm eager for the days that you're not here. So, and then Chief, thank you for, again, cool, level-headedness and all of you guys have intelligence and common sense and I appreciate the fact that you're not keeping it to yourselves and that you are using it to try to protect us from these three tyrants. So I am going to say again, thank you, thank you, thank you. We mask if we want, we don't vaccinate if we don't want. It's called choice. Remember that, girls? You guys are the Me Too ones, right? But you want to hand all over, over all the spending power to the master man, right? Ms. Dunaway and Ms. Clancy and the Me Too. Well, my body, my choice, that should appeal to you. That's what we're saying. And stop this nonsense. Stop killing people's businesses. Stop forcing kids to separate and, and be locked down in school under masks. Or worse, last year, when they were forced to be staying with their abusers because children are viewed by their teachers who are mandatory reporters. So when you do that, you lock people down and you're taking away their lives. And I hope that that dirt smears your families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we've reached, we've reached two hours of public forum.
I request the, I request to take the place of two people that were unable to be here. I would like to speak. My name is...
I'm sorry, we're at 8:35. Is it going to be very, very brief?
Very brief.
Very, very brief?
Very brief. I promise. I promise, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. What's your name and your ZIP code, please?
My name is Aline Reeves and my ZIP code is 32909. I'm from Palm Bay, Florida. I came up here on vacation with my family and I heard about this meeting and I just could not stay away. I just want you to know, you're all, you're not alone. There's many, many, many more Americans that are standing for freedom. I want to say that if the media has put on every night on the news, the number of people who died from alcohol, from drugs, from smoking, from cancer, we'd all be cowering under our beds. We wouldn't go anywhere if the media had the same fervor it does with this virus that's 199% survivable. So please stop with the masks, stop with the forced vaccines. God bless you for standing for righteousness and vote. I mean, did one person speak in favor of masks here? If you're all supposed to represent your constituents, please just stop the masks, stop the forcing. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Enjoy. Thank you. Okay. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we are moving to the report from the county executive. He is on video there.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, a city resident who attended last week's county council meeting...
One second. Uh, one second, Dr. Page.
Yes.
There we go. That's better.
As a result, there are serious concerns from public health officials in the city and the county that others who attended the standing room only meeting are also infected. On Sunday, the city's health director, Dr. Echols, recommended that everyone who attended the meeting quarantine, including those fully vaccinated. Meanwhile, the St. Louis County Department of Public Health has been interviewing individuals who were in potential close contact with the city resident. The majority of people who were in close contact have not yet been identified based on those videos reviewed by health officials. If you think you are exposed, please contact the health department so they can do all they can to help prevent more spread of this virus.
One second, Dr. Page. One second, please. I just want to make sure that you guys exit, please, very quietly. Thank you, Dr. Page.
Most of those in attendance at the four-hour meeting last week were not wearing masks and many of those in the, in attendance raised their voices and expressing their position on a mask mandate. That is a combination for spread. The behavior by some in the room was inappropriate and embarrassing for St. Louis County. The behavior by some in the room was inappropriate and embarrassing for St. Louis County. The community I love was thrust into the national spotlight for words and deeds unbecoming of this great place we call home. As I sat at the dais, I heard the anger and I saw the frustration. And I've seen, as I did that night, the emotions around public health orders and other decisions by public health experts to keep people from getting sick or dying. I recognize this fear and anxiety, and I do appreciate hearing those concerns. However, it saddens me that protecting lives has become divisive. We must come together to get through this pandemic. It's the only way forward. If there was ever a time for bitter partisanship, this is not it. This type of behavior distracts from the incredibly difficult work of our public health experts and hospital systems over the past 18 months. We all need to be on the right side of history. We are disappointed in the judge's decision as more and more mask requirements are put into place across the country to help slow this deadly virus. The CDC recommends wearing masks in public places, and we ask everyone to follow that guidance as we continue our vaccine efforts and return to court in a few weeks to make our case for why the mask mandate is proper and necessary. As Judge Roboto said today, although some will take this court ruling as a victory, there is no victory while the COVID-19 virus remains a significant threat to public health, and there is no question it remains a significant threat to public health. There can be no victory until the residents of St. Louis County and the state of Missouri are no longer risking their health, well-being, and lives at the hands of the COVID-19 virus. The bills on mask mandates and vaccines that are before the council are two bills that I support. Masks can help us slow the virus, keep our businesses open, and keep our schools on track for a fall semester that includes in-classroom learning. Wearing masks is an easy way to make a big difference. This variant is a real threat to our community and to our country. The virus is raging. We must take it seriously and put steps in place to curb it. I've asked the Department of Public Health to put together a report on COVID-19 vaccinations in St. Louis County. It will show how we are faring compared to the rest of the country, the rest of the state, and by zip code. Our positivity rate is at 11.5%, and we are averaging more than 265 cases a day. There is too much virus circulating in our communities. Tomorrow's presentation will highlight our progress, detail our challenges, and give our community the deepest look yet at vaccination efforts in St. Louis County. We need more people getting tested, and we need more people getting the vaccine. We need to unite against this 100-year event. The longer we fight public health decisions, the longer the pandemic continues to have the upper hand. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, I did neglect to thank all of you for coming this evening and for giving us the benefit of your wisdom and your words and your suggestions for us. We do appreciate the public comment, and thank you so much for that. And if some of you have to leave, have a good evening. Yes, Councilwoman, Councilman Fitch, I'm sorry.
Well, here I am, the county executive.
Councilman Fitch. County Executive, I think there's a question for you, please.
Okay.
Mr. County Executive, there's many businesses in different churches, et cetera, in St. Louis County that have one simple question to ask, and they're waiting for an answer from them. Is there currently a mask mandate in St. Louis County, yes or no?
Madam Chair, I didn't hear a question.
I'll try it again. Mr. County Executive, many businesses in St. Louis County are asking a simple question of you, and they want to hear it from you. Do we currently have a mask mandate in St. Louis County, yes or no?
The judge has issued a temporary restraining order on the St. Louis County mask mandate. We'll be back in court in two weeks to make our argument while we think the mask mandate is proper and is best for St. Louis County. In the interim, I expect that many people will continue wearing masks because St. Louis County residents, businesses, patrons, employees want to know what the right thing to do is, and they'll do it. And I would expect them to continue to do it. And there will be certainly arguments and, I hope, minimum confrontations about the question, but we know from the CDC, from the American Academy of Pediatrics, from our public health experts that wearing a mask when you're indoors is the right thing to do at this time.
And I know we heard that, but I will take that as a no. There's not a mask mandate in St. Louis County. The people just want to know what the law is. That's all they want to know. And I was just looking for either there is or there isn't. We'd already heard that explanation. So, sir, are you comfortable with saying there's no mask mandate right now in St. Louis County?
There is a temporary restraining order by the judge against the mask mandate.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think you want to answer.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask the county executive a question as well. I would like to know, are you going to accept the resignation of Dr. Khan?
I'm embarrassed for the way Dr. Khan was treated last week, and I stand with Dr. Khan. We will pursue the investigation by St. Louis County, and we will announce those results when we're completed with it.
Mr. County Executive, do you believe that Dr. Khan was assaulted last week?
I believe what Dr. Khan told me his experience was, as do many, many people in our community, and we'll wait and see what the investigation tells us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a juvenile alternatives-to-detention grant of up to $15,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's juvenile alternatives-to-detention program, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Operations for the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 209, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $7,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the provision of certain legal services for parents involved in the juvenile court system, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Operations for the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 210, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $15,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of provision of mediation services through the Family Court's Confidential Mediation Project, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Operations for the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 211, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $15,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's children affected by domestic violence project, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Operations of the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 212, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $7,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's domestic violence court-based victim advocacy project, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Operations of the Family Court to execute necessary documents. Bill number 213, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $414,311 from the unappropriated balances of the general fund for support of services provided by the Department of Police to buy state development. Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and one subsequent renewal with St. Louis University, doing businesses slew care for the provision of corrections medicine medical director for the Department of Public Health and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 215, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and one subsequent renewal with St. Louis University, doing businesses slew care for the provision of corrections medicine primary care services for the Department of Public Health and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 216, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a multi-party cooperation agreement with the land clearance for redevelopment authority of the County of St. Louis and Family and Workforce Centers of America for the operation of a workforce training program at the Met Center, prescribing and approving the form and details of said cooperation agreement and authorizing the execution of additional necessary documents. Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an emergency ordinance, an ordinance requiring certain persons to wear face coverings while in indoor and enclosed public building spaces and public transportation vessels in St. Louis County and declaring an emergency. Bill number 218, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract to provide legal services to St. Louis County related to an investigation of the county council's ethics committee. Madam Chair, that is all the bills this evening.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the...
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Thank you. Before we move on from introduction of bills, Madam Chair, I want to address, I have to address, the introduction of Bill number 217 by Councilwoman Clancy. It is a bill that will require citizens to wear masks in buildings and other places. It is obviously a controversial issue. There wasn't one person who spoke tonight in favor of any sort of mask mandate, let alone an ordinance. So, for that reason, Madam Chair, I am requesting that before this bill moves any further, we have a committee of the whole so that we can hear from experts on both sides of the issue, as well as citizens in St. Louis County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tracus. Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, I do not plan to move this bill tonight. I would like to take a vote next week. If you all want to have a hearing, we can have a hearing. But I do want to say, I would be remiss if I did not give voice to all of the folks who do not feel safe coming to the chamber tonight in order to let us know what they feel about it. I received between this week, this time, between about 4 o'clock today and about a week ago, I received approximately 790 emails from people all over St. Louis County who are in favor of a mask mandate, many of which who told me that they do not feel that the council chambers are safe for them right now. They do not want to risk attending another super-spreeder event. So, we are going to have a committee of the whole. I do think we need to have an opportunity for people to make their comments virtually so that we are making sure that we have an inclusive process and all voices are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clancy, as well as Tracus, and we will be scheduling a committee of the whole as soon as we can possibly do that. So, thank you very much.
I hope it can be before I vote next week on it. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I would like to have a vote on it next week, so let's please do it before then. This is an important matter.
I'm not sure. I cannot guarantee you that we will have it next week. We have several things in the hopper, but we will get to you with a committee of the whole. So, thank you. Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88 is held.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number 139. Bill number 139 is held.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
I moved, Bill number 156 is held.
Bill number 191, introduced by Councilmember Days.
Please hold Bill number 191. Bill number 191 is held.
Bill number 200, introduced by Councilmember Days.
Please hold Bill number 201. Bill number 201 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 203, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 203. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 203 is perfected.
Bill number 204, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 204. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 204 is perfected.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 205. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 205 is perfected.
Bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 206. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 206 is perfected.
Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 207. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. That's one no. Bill number 207 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Did Councilmember Tracus say no?
Yes, that was one no.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 192, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 192.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 192, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 192 is finally passed.
Bill number 193, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 193. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 193, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 193 is finally passed.
Bill number 194, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 194. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb? Madam Chair, on Bill number 194, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 194 is finally passed.
Number 195, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 195.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 195, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 195 is finally passed.
Bill number 196, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 196.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 196, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 196 is finally passed.
Bill number 197, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number 197.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
I think you don't need-- Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 197, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 197 is finally passed.
Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 198.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 198, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 198 is finally passed.
Bill number 199, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move for final passage of bill 199.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 199, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 199 is finally passed.
Bill number 200, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move for final passage of bill number 200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
These two behind us are not on.
I'm back on now.
Okay, yeah, we're looking at the two that are facing the audience. They haven't come up yet there. One, two, all right. Okay. I-- Where were we?
200.
Our bill 200.
I think we've asked for a roll call. I think the roll call was in order.
Okay, so I'll just start over. Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 200, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 200 is finally passed. We do not have any resolutions this evening.
Correct, Madam Chair.
Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number three?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order as well.
Uh, item number five?
Hold on the order of business. Same motion will apply for number six, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening in the matter of a proposed project for industrial development pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 100 RSMO, Patheon Biologic LLC.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Number one is adopted. Any other business to come before the body this evening? No announcements, Councilwoman Harder?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you for being a great audience. Thank you for your comments this evening. It can be done, and maybe we'll see you again. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I could not let this night end because I do believe I need to address what happened throughout this week because I too felt attacked. I want to take the time to address the events of last week before getting into this. I'd like to address and stress that I believe in masks. I believe in the vaccination. I have talked to the constituents of District Four, and many of them have the same. I listen, I'm sorry. I listened as they talked to me about the deaths in their family. I too have experienced death, more than one in my family, but throughout this year. So, my heart is not hurting to their sorrow. I have empathy for them. I listen to you all too. And at the same time, I want to make sure that I'm making a thoughtful, informed decision every time I come to this microphone. I don't take this responsibility lightly at all. We all understand the climate that we're in, and we have an obligation to answer the questions and understand all the parameters that we're dealing with. We can't take any of these decisions lightly. And as a governing body, we have to do things decent and in order. Look, there's no place for mistreatment of anybody, and I wouldn't stand for it if it was done to anybody. But that mistreatment wasn't just alleged for some. It was true for myself this past week. I've had to answer many hard questions this week. I've had to justify my rationale for my decision, and I don't scurry from that. I'm not afraid of doing that. I take the time to make sure I listen to all. And even though, as I talk to constituents, and I call them family members in District Four, they respectfully listen and even said, "I hear where you're coming from as well, but I disagree with you." That respect is big. I was born that way, that respect. It's not always earned, but you give it to someone until they give you a reason not I don't respect nastiness, and I've received some this past week. You cannot one man have disdain for one, but it's okay for you to do it. I was deeply hurt when my colleague, Councilwoman Dunaway, went on radio and said that she didn't consider me a Democrat. I did not receive that scrutiny in private, so I have to answer you in public. You don't get to judge my blackness, nor whether or not I'm a Democrat. So, I have on blue, and I have on my Michelle Obama mask, just in case you don't know. But it's not just due to my attire, it's due to my actions. And they don't have to align with someone's checklist. They have to align to make sure that I take care of the people of North County. Sometimes, sometimes you all would not agree with me. And the same claps I'm getting tonight, they're going to turn to boos. But at no time do you have the right to judge my intent, to judge my heart. The only judgment I'm going to ask for too is that of God. And I do pray, and I pray, Proverbs 26, "I acknowledge you in all my ways so that you may direct my path." And I believe that with humility comes wisdom. So, what I've said before, when others have come to me and talked to me or addressed me inappropriately, I'm not-- I am not judging you, so don't judge me. I'm not trying to chastise you, so don't chastise me. What I am doing is telling you how to respect me, and I'm setting expectations on how to work with you. So, I hope we don't have to come back down this path again. I hope that we can learn to respect each other and treat each other as colleagues respectfully. And I keep saying respectfully because actions for me from the very beginning have not been respectful. In fact, for many Black women that sit in this council, respect has not been what has been given to us, not been what we have earned in these roles. Listen, I work in a professional environment every day in corporate America. No one tells me what to do. We have a discussion, I listen to people's input, and then I go back and make a decision based on what I've heard. Same thing in my household. My husband does not tell me what to do. We have a discussion, we respect each other, and then we make a decision on this council, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. You do not tell me what to do. We have a discussion, I listen to your inputs, and then I make a decision. For the members of District Four, we have a discussion, I listen to their inputs, and then I make a decision. So, I hope there was nothing in my words shared tonight that was confusing or puzzled you, because then we can have a discussion. I'll listen to your inputs, and then I'll make a decision.
Councilwoman-- Was that Dunaway?
No, it's Clancy.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, I want to go back to some policy issues on our agenda. Last week, people packed into our chambers and cheered when the council voted to terminate a public health order that required people to wear a piece of cloth over their faces to slow the spread of a deadly disabling virus that is raging out of control in our state. But prior last week's meeting, and since then, as I mentioned earlier, I've heard from nearly 800 people who are urging the council to support and pass a mask mandate. Their voices were not heard last week or this week because they did not want to risk exposure by attending our meeting, and it turns out that was a wise decision. I do want to give them voice tonight by pointing that out. In their statements last week, my colleagues took issue with process, saying that the council should have been consulted in advance. For that reason, they voted to rescind the order. As you were aware, I did not. As I have said before, I unequivocally support a mask mandate because healthcare and medical experts who are using science to guide them have told us that we need to slow the spread of the Delta variant and to save lives and livelihoods. I do stand with those experts. I stand with our local public health officials, including Dr. Khan in the Centers for Disease Control. I stand with our hospital officials. I stand with our children, who are likely to suffer long-term effects if they get COVID. I stand for the health of each of you, our council staff, who often don't get a voice in these matters, and I stand with all of our constituents, young and old, who we need to protect from this illness. So, I believe those of you who said last week that you objected to the process and not the content of the mask order. For that reason, I did introduce a masking bill tonight. I did hear a call for a hearing. Be that as it may, I hope we can get it in before next Tuesday, because next Tuesday, we will put my bill to rest one way or another and take a vote on my bill. And I implore each of you to take the time between now and then to not only consider all of the science that has been put before us and has been available widely in other sources for a long time now, but also to work with me to get a version of this bill that you agree to. We need to stand together for public health and to save lives and livelihoods, and I do hope for your cooperation and support to get this done. Thank you.
Any further business, any further discussion?
Madam Chair. One last thing. Thank you.
I didn't get it back.
Thank you. I just-- I just have to respond to Councilwoman Clancy, and I think Councilman Tracus said it very well when he spoke earlier about a mandatory mask mandate. If you didn't notice when you came in tonight, I had a mask on for most of the night. That wasn't because Sam Page told me I had to. That wasn't because the city health director said I had to. That was because it's a choice. That's what this is about for me. It's about a choice. It's not about the government jamming it down your throat and telling you you have to do it. So, if you want to wear a mask, and I've told many businesses this in the last week, if you want to put a sign up because it's your store policy to not let people in without a mask, that's on you, then they have a choice to go to your competitor that wouldn't let them in without a mask. So, Councilwoman Clancy, yes, it was about the process, it's about the law. That's the first thing that we had to clear as far as hurdle goes. I think the judge spoke very loudly today, despite Sam Page not wanting to acknowledge there's no mask mandate in St. Louis County. There's no mask mandate in St. Louis County, okay? Now, with that said, Councilwoman Clancy, I look forward to a robust discussion, whether we do it in a committee of the whole or whether we just vote on it next week. But I will tell you right now, you are never going to get me to vote in favor of a forced
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion to adjourn.
May I be heard?
Yes, sir, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I hate to belabor things, but I'm compelled to speak in response to Councilwoman Clancy. To Councilman Fitch's point, the vote last week may have been about process for most of the five. For me, as I clearly indicated, it was as much about liberty as anything else. I too will never support an ordinance that forces the citizens of St. Louis County to wear a mask, any more than I will ever vote to support an ordinance that forces St. Louis County employees or anybody else to take a vaccine of an experimental drug. The bill introduced tonight is fraught with infirmities, not the least of which, if you want to talk about science, the only type of mask that has any hope of preventing anything is an N95. This bill doesn't call for us to all wear N95s. It calls for us to wear a piece of cloth that most scientists and doctors, if they tell you truly, would have to tell you that it does nothing to prevent you from getting it and little to prevent you from spreading it. So, and that's before we get to the constitutionality and legal issues involved in forcing people to wear masks that does them no good. So, I too look forward to a robust debate on this issue, and hopefully we'll have that. And I hope this council does the right thing if and when that bill is ever brought to a vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
One last time, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, I don't believe the hearing request was in good faith. I mean, I heard both, I heard Councilman Tracus and then also Councilman Fitch say that they will never vote for this. So, you know, I will vote, we'll vote on this next week, up or down. There's other folks on the council whose opinions I value also and want to hear from, and I look forward to taking this up next week. Thank you.
Madam Chair.[1709.07]